Call me, ignore it. But to reflect on council members present, move in with our department reports, starting with code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we see on the report, there's four years, this is for July period. We had total calls per hundred sixty six in the department, eighty-four for inspections, grew up seventeen permits, so both those things are picking up. We had ten business licenses and alcohol inhalers. And so the city marshal removed eighteen signs from the roadway, wrote two hundred and three repair cleanup orders for re-inspections. That number includes both investigated six tampering theft cases, wrote four citations and served twenty-three civil action orders for nuisance properties. And then the question, um, try me?
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Electric and telecom.
Thank you, Mayor. Use a little bit over fourteen and a half million kilowatt hours, so the cost of one point to one million dollars. Top user was eight hundred twenty-nine gig, two hundred and eleven above, two hundred gig peak usage up to one point four gig. Items of interest, we helped Monroe area to repair their ball field lights this year. They had been paid, I think it was four thousand dollars last year they paid the contractor to come up and repair the lights. So we acquired the safety, required safety equipment that we needed. And we did this for cost of the lights and bulbs, wherever the parts were, savings were probably about thirty-five hundred dollars. We started relocation on South Prop T. Go in on South Prop past Hardee's, you'll see our electric crews now allying out all the old wire and getting and repairing and putting the new wire in. So that's the first thing that has to happen for that South Prop Two project. We should be pulling wire over there in the next couple of weeks, and then I believe the contractor's gonna be in within Matthew three, four weeks.
Makes sense.
Something like that, start on the sidewalks and such. And we continue to work on Loganville data, that's moving along, we're getting there, but it's just taking a little time, we're still under budget. And that's all I have, do you have any questions?
What type of traffic disruptions will your people cause on South Prop?
Well, this, I look to my, I defer that to the mayor, because he was, he was down there this morning, and it's been very little actually. We, we have been.
Traffic control's been very good so far. I mean, I think the city does a good job, when they block one lane, they get them moving pretty quick.
From what the contractor for the T project told us in pre-construction meeting, he can't, the state made very clear that he can only close one lane at a time. And down that area, if you close one lane, as long as you've got good traffic control, you're all right.
Mr. Mayor, traffic is the biggest issue.
Well, Mr. State routes, they can't start until nine o'clock, and they have to finish by four.
Yes.
So that the five o'clock, when all the traffic's moving through, they're not closing that many.
We're working with, there's a, of course, the mayor's store, the restaurant, and a daycare center, all right there together. We're trying to work around their schedules with our crews to get in and out of there. And once they start doing the sidewalks, we start doing the lighting, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be disruptive to them for a short period of time. But I think once it's done, they're about to be happy with the outcome.
Any more questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance department, Renee?
Thank you, Mayor. You have the reports for July, a couple of things to point out. I think the cash balances are looking really good for this time of year, just before taxes start coming in, things get a little bit tight. But we've not had that as many issues as we've had, and so I'm hoping that's a sign of things are kind of picking up. All the departments seem to be coming in right around their budget or under their budget, which is a really good thing. So the finances look like they're in good shape. The splosh is staying at a constant, pretty constant level, so everything looks pretty good in that respect. For the staff, we're working on the 2015 budget, trying to get that out a month early. It's a workshop coming up in a couple of months, and the millage rate will be set next week, so we'll be sending out tax bills hopefully by the end of the month, month of September. And then on September the 25th, we've tentatively scheduled a meeting, greet with the worksite RX staff, or worksite RX clinic staff. They'll do like an orientation, an overview of the services offered, introduce the staff and that kind of thing. So we'll do about three sessions, I think is what they've got planned with that. And then we're also gonna start our wellness testing for the year, and we'll actually be doing that inside the clinic, utilizing the clinic and that staff. Hopefully we'll save a little bit of money by doing that. We'll spread out over a month, so you'll be getting notices or the staff will, for testing on that, we'll start on the 21st of October, Monday, or the 20th of November. Do you want to answer any questions?
Thank you, Renee. Fire department, RV, I guess, have you got that, or is it, oh, no. Jack?
Thank you. Fire department responded to one hundred thirty-nine calls in July, ninety-six, ninety-six which were emergency medical related, no significant fires to be noted. We logged three hundred and three hours of training time. We did complete the hydrant maintenance and inspection on July fourteenth. Had very good success with the water department reporting any issues that we had. Some new electronics that we've communicated with them, getting repairs done quickly, and we can see a good result. We participated in the Garrett Martin Festival at Matthews Park, which was a large family reunion. Took blood pressures, did our stove fire simulator, and provided fire safety education for that group out there, turned out real well. That about sums it up, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Now, police department.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a telecall for service for this month, four thousand two hundred seventy-eight calls to the police department, was one thousand four ninety-four. Court cases was five hundred forty-six. We had a total of three hundred forty-eight hours of training that was logged. We had ninety-one part one crimes, one hundred and forty-two of the part two crimes. Had a total of one hundred twenty-six adult arrests, nine juvenile, and we logged five hundred sixty pounds of trash that was picked up by our community service. And we also participated in thirteen individual community events. Any other questions, I'd be glad to answer best again.
Good, thank you. Solid waste.
Thank you, Mayor. To note, our commercial tonnage for City Monroe is trending down, and residential tonnage is trending up, and maybe because of the holiday, the summer season is fucking me with the bad. We're still trying to get the bag, car stuff, off and route, deliver sixteen new or used carts. Other than that, everything's pretty much consistent. Just want to make you know that we are running modified schedule, and Tuesday and Wednesday customers will be picked up tomorrow. Any questions, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Streets and transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just highlighting a few areas of the report. On the admin side, we rented out a community building one time in the month of July, which was by far the lowest this, to date this year. Our fleet maintenance division serviced one hundred and thirty-five units throughout the entire fleet of the city. The grounds crew picked up about half a ton of litter throughout the streets as well as continued maintenance on all city facilities, some of the power stations and the water pump stations. Our street division has, we're planning, well, it's already scheduled the fifteenth of the month to finish our L-MIG project, which will be completing paving of East Maryville as well as Burke Street. Within that week, maybe getting into the following week, we'll complete that. And we are scheduled to start some sidewalk rehab beginning next week on Highland Avenue. We have knocked a big chunk off of the ground construction list out at the airport. There was one major berm out there separating, almost like the boundary between one of the creeks and the taxiway. It had to come down to same elevation as the taxiway and runway, so we, it was about three weeks nonstop out there getting it done. But it's complete where it needs to be, as well as a couple of renovations to some stormwater issues out there. So we're continuing to narrow that list of obstruction stuff down out of the airport. Also, our engineers kicking wood are preparing the cost estimate for some sidewalks on Spring Street, getting the ball rolling on that. I know that's been a big issue, so we're getting things going on that. Aside, the rest of the report's pretty consistent, the design of market vision and building maintenance. I'll be glad to entertain any questions. Streets and transportation.
Okay, thank you. Water sewer, gas, and stormwater.
Thank you, Mayor. Everything's trending along pretty well. People noticed that water distribution board quarters jumped a way up, that's to do with the meter change out project. If they run across some issues that they can't deal with, a meter, a board quarter for us to go back out. Outside of that, everything's pretty, pretty normal. Residential, commercial meter change outs continue, and we began the fire hydrant replacement. Apparently those knocked down. It's been July, we checking all our repaired leaks from our gas leak survey, so we can remove those from the, from the list, and finish the Madison Street ditch renovation, and getting ready to start on the woodland plantations. And that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'll answer.
All right, thank you, Renee.
See you.
Move into our committee information, start with finance.
Thank you, Mayor, we don't have any items on the agenda this evening.
All right, airport.
We have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, public works.
Yes, Mayor, we have one item this afternoon, this evening, and it's discussion approved of out-of-state travel. I'm gonna give that to Jeremiah.
Thank you, Mr. Stacey. I'm seeking approval for some out-of-state travel for one of our mechanics, Patrick Peters. It's for a hail pump system, which is the primary system for pumps in our, all of our emergency vehicles, specifically our fire trucks. To my knowledge and any other mechanic's knowledge, we've never had anybody certified on staff to service these pumps in this, this emergency vehicles. And doing some research, we talked with Chief Glass, several of the captains over at the fire department. We looked into this program, and it's actually, this program is put on by the people that make this pump system, and there's two places to get this trained, one's in Ocala, Florida, the other one's in upstate Pennsylvania. They're coming up, and these classes fill up rather quickly. There's two left this year, one in November, one in December, so I'm asking tonight that we approve to, for that out-of-state travel, to get one of our mechanics certified and this stuff. And just to give, throw some numbers around, it's probably gonna cost us less than a thousand dollars, that's including the scheduling, the certification test, the travel, the per diem and all that stuff. The last time we had one of these pump systems worked on, the bill was eleven thousand dollars. I'm not saying that we would be able to recoup all that eleven thousand dollars in-house, but there was about four thousand dollars worth of labor into that bill. We'll be able to do that labor in-house. So we see a pretty, pretty rapid return, or the next time we have to work on one of those, one of those pumps, we'll be able to see a return for what it cost us to get one of our guys certified. I'll be glad to entertain any questions on that.
All right, seeing that there are no questions, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. It's been motioned, second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that approval, we'll take it to the council for recommendation. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing is the John T. Briscoe Junior Reservoir Management Plan. Ms. Millbrook?
Thank you, Ms. Mill. Received some calls from two landowners at the reservoir requesting permission to install boat ramps. We've attached our current rules and regulations for the, for the reservoir, page four states that any use maintenance construction or access to the reservoir shall be through the use of a boat ramp, which shall be gravel only across the bulk, the buffer of the reservoir boundary, and exit plan owners shall be bound, written permit and approval. First, we've never given approval in the past, if they ask, we've told them we don't, we don't approve, based off the fact it is a drinking water reservoir, and the boat ramps will contribute seal and other issues, erosion along our shoreline. So what I'm asking to do, also, that's an email, could be there in front of you, Carl, had him go back and review, and one thing that he did recommend was, last night, is no permits for these boat ramps. And what I would like to do is actually just completely go through our management plan for the reservoir. One, it refers to the waterline gas commission in several areas, and also the general manager. So we'll update that to the off-city of Monroe, but also make the change to not allow boat ramps at all. And then there's a few other little things that he had made comment in there that we wanna address, one being number three, any construction must have a permit by the city. Currently, any codes or any, any regulations as far as how far off the waterline you have to be, county forces, but still, we would like to have some, some say in that, be involved in that, that part of, to try to address these landowners beforehand, to make them aware of some of our regulations. What's happened in the past is, we've, we've actually got two boat ramps there now, and those landowners installed them based off of the petition permit they get every year. And when Ms. Kirk sends it to them, she also included the rules. Well, they took it based off that page four there, that, that was the permit, so they went ahead and installed it. So what we would do in the new rules and regulations, our new management plan, would have to say to the United States that the city would expect those on a yearly basis, that they would have to keep in mind the issue that's not causing the issue with, with the reservoir. What I'd like to do is try to, try to have a draft by next Tuesday night, and we'll present.
Honey, I understand it, you put boat ramps in, the way they have to sink down into the water, really causes, can cause an erosion issue, and stuff to run into the water, you know, silt and other things that will damage the water.
Right, just me, when you back the boat in, you could have petroleum base from the axles, from the trailer, you've got grease from the back wheels of the truck that they pull down too far. And also, when a boat travels from one lake to another, you have a chance of contaminating the water. We think that's how we ended up with all the algae we ended up with a few years ago, we had to put the carp in. We think that was because of something, when they placed the boat in, it wasn't washed, and caused the algae, algae problem. That's one of the requirements in the, in the management plan, that they have to, you know, boats should be washed before placing the water, but...
Were these boat docks in before ninety-five?
Um, no.
I mean, 'cause it says right there in the rule, as of nineteen ninety-five, no boat docks.
We're talking, not, we're not talking about docks.
Not a dock.
No, ramps.
Ramps, oh, okay.
But, but answers, but the answer's none of that too, right?
Right.
Well, since we didn't issue permit, I don't know, why can't we make, take them down?
Well, problem is, you don't have to, you don't go down there and disturb the shoreline again.
One of them's gonna go away anyway, what's the, what's the other one?
He may be aware of Howbro.
Oh, well, his is, his was there before ninety-five, no?
But you're saying to remove it would cause more damage, I believe. That's authority there.
Well, on, on How's shoreline, it's just kind of ball right into the lake, and he's got real crap around the corner anyway, due to, where, which house it is, it actually sits on water. The water actually comes up under the building. So he's got real crap out there, real crap out there anyway. You wouldn't wanna remove it, because it's gonna cause erosion issues on your property. The other one that Mr. Perkins referred to, that's gonna go away, they agreed to let it just grow up, let vegetation take over.
I think the, I, the permitting was supposedly clear that they were not supposed to do it, even in two thousand and three, when we did this, they may have interpreted it slightly different, and I, if you think they're not really harming the reservoir, maybe we could allow them to grandfather them in. I mean, that's what you're saying, right?
And we just ramp off those again, and actually have, you know, something in the management plan that states that we would expect those on a yearly basis, be sure to keep in mind, regarding erosion issues.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to authorize Ms. Millbrook to proceed with rewriting the reservoir management plan?
Would that be something we would approve after it's written?
I think, he's just, yeah, he's gonna bring it back, but he needs our permission to go ahead and rewrite, and then he'll bring it back.
If we need a motion, I'll make it, I'm not sure we need one, he's just gonna bring back the approval.
Well, okay. He's authorized to at least rewrite it, all right? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next item is the reconductor, Mr. Thompson.
Last month, I approved vegetation, moved from, basically from the area of Church Street over to BFW, and now Davis, Lacy, New Lacy. We finished the design, and we come in, we think it's a good number. We want to get you to approve us to spend not to exceed a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to reconductor and replace poles in that whole neighborhood. We use multiple vendors, a couple of contractors, and do some of the work ourselves. Pretty sure we come in under that. Let electric cities do a lot of, well, they've done all the engineering, but they've done a lot of estimation too, and I'm, I'm very confident with the number we can get this done for this month. What this'll do is help the reliability and the energy loss in the New Lacy, Lacy Street, David Street area, that's all copper right now, it's a number six copper. It's about the size of your pinky. And what happens is, any limb of any weight that falls on that will break that number six copper. You go, the new wire we're using all over town is one-off ACSO, especially aluminum with a steel core. And that steel core allows that electric line to stand up to that impact of a limb of certain size, but a lot bigger size than what we have here. We're also gonna replace about sixty-five poles in the area, and then we will have all aluminum to aluminum connections, which will help on energy loss in the area. I'll take any questions you may have.
How long will this project take?
Oh, it'll take the rest of the year. It'll be, it'll take a little time. We've got a, we'll order material, we'll do it in phases, we'll do David Street, and then we'll do the fingers off of David Street, and we'll, we'll phase it out, and we'll, we'll keep the community aware using our social media, and we'll have signs in the area. But it's a long-needed project. You'll see, next year, we will, we're looking at two other areas. One is the Woodland Road area, and one is the Hickory Drive area, the same kind of wire. Me and Mike Parker talked last week, he's our owner, he was saying, we've done more reconductor in the past year than we did in batch twenty-five. Well, I said, it's just late, I plan on doing a little bit more, because it needs to be done. It's reliability issue is the big thing, but there is energy loss in those aluminum and copper connections.
What happens to all the old copper?
We sell it immediately, as soon as we bring it in, we take it and sell it. What we'll do is, we will, we bid out to, we sell our copper, and that's a weekly or monthly thing, you don't wanna keep a lot of it hanging around.
Right.
We'll go down to the recyclers in the area, they're not too far to drive, basically from Hattens to Loganville, price out copper, and then take it to the highest price one that, that week. This will be a bigger, a bigger amount, but we try not to, we try not to stockpile.
What do you do with, what do you do with that money? I'm just curious.
It goes to...
General fund?
No, it goes back to...
If this, if this project, we just, we're contracted for price comparison purposes, what?
Completely just contracted, probably closer to two, because we're gonna contract a good bit of this, because we're gonna be working on the South Prop T, which is gonna take a lot of our, our time, and then we're gonna be hopefully working on the one thirty-eight intention ourselves. But yeah, it'll be closer to two if you did everything. There's about three sections and three bad areas that we're gonna do ourselves. About bad, I mean, three face junction poles, that cost a lot of money to change, when you go to a contractor, we can do that work ourselves. We can do it all ourselves, and this is all we have to do right now. We really, I really need to get this done as quickly as we can.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the CIP reconductor.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll recommend that to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all we have.
Okay. Public safety.
Mayor, council, we got one item tonight on the agenda to, for discussion and approval with surplus items, and I'll turn this over to RV, what?
Thank you, Mr. Rivers. What you see is a list of vehicles, this is actually, vehicles will be surplus through the police department and fire department, as well as vehicles and property that we've seized or asset forfeiture, all of which will be listed on the governmentdeal.com website to be sold. If you have any questions, I'll answer them as best as I can.
Any questions? Like to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion second.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll recommend that to full council next week, Mayor. That's all the items we have this week.
Okay, thank you. Economic development.
Mayor, Ms. Crossley's not here tonight, she had a urgent personal situation come up late this afternoon, and she wasn't able to be. I would like to just point out a couple things, I don't know what else to discuss if she was here, but I think most of the council's aware of the awards that the DDA received last week at the Georgia downtown association, one was for the, the pocket park, won an award for the design, won three awards throughout the state. And one of the, one of our citizens that worked through the DDA and some other things and volunteering, won the state volunteer of the year award. So that was a, a real nice program, and I was glad I was able to attend that and see these presentations being made. Also point out that the Spar Hill Inn, the New Bed and Breakfast, as well as the Boutique Hotel downtown, both have done a booming business over the last several days, particularly this weekend with Georgia football, people coming in town, so I think it's really good for us, and hopefully a, a good sign for us, you know, later to get another nicer, a nice hotel. The, realizing that people attending Georgia football games like to come to Monroe, they like to stay here, they did some things, and, you know, they would stay, there were several people that stayed here that wanted to come school up later and play golf the next day, and, you know, some other things like that, so they spent some money while they were in town. So I think we've got some things moving along there, and I think it's all about here right now.
Thank you. Items of discussion, upcoming, upcoming public hearing, the approval of the two thousand and fourteen millage rate. You've got your, had some discussion on that last...
You've got your, had some discussion on that last, at our retreat. Any questions about that? Okay, and we have a discussion of purchase of trucks.
Mayor, I'll take that. And that's, I'm going to ask that we purchase, as we continue to evaluate our fleet and look at the age of equipment and trucks that we do have. If you open the attachment, there are seven vehicles that we're proposing to replace. And we went out and tried to get five bids. And of course, we got three mag. Six of the seven bids, the low bids, were Hardy Family Automotive. The only one that was not was underwater sewer gas. The purchase was a service body vehicle. And I'm going to defer Rodney to explain exactly why they're $2,000 more than Loganville for. But Rodney, why were they?
I'm asking you to go with the Hardy Family Automotive bid at 35,7. Reason being, Hardy quoted the NAFI beds, service body beds. In the years past, we bought red beds on all our service body trucks and didn't hold up very well. When we bought the service bodies last year, we asked for NAFIs. That's what we got. They're holding up a lot better. The steel's made out, made out of a lot quicker, the latches are better. Seems to be overall a better built service body. So I was asking that we could spend that additional, about $1,700 to get the, get the NAFI bid again.
Overall, there's an addition, about an additional forty-some-odd thousand dollar savings under what we had proposed in the CIP budget for 2014. So there's a little bit of wiggle room there. But again, these are on our CIP list. And we're just asking that we continue to implement that by purchasing these seven vehicles.
Any questions on that? Okay. Looks like that's about the end of our meeting, so we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
Motion by Ms. Dixon, second by Ms. Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.